Good evening. We'd like to call this evening's City of Greer Planning and Commission meeting to order. We have a pretty short agenda tonight. We don't anticipate being here very long. I'd like to thank you folks for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank the board members for being here. This is, I guess, our first really working meeting of the year since we didn't have a meeting in January and we didn't have a meeting in March. We basically trained in February. So if anyone on the board would need to disqualify themselves for any of the items that are before us tonight, if you would please fill out a recusable form and when the case is called, step down. We will have you back up after that. Is that going to affect anybody? Planning meeting minutes from our last meeting, did everybody get a chance to look at those? Do we have any additions, subtractions, adjustments?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Arciana?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. Thank you. We will now open the public hearing during this time. We will open and close the public hearing for each of the requests that are before us tonight. We will start with staff getting just the basic information for the request and the applicant will present the request. We'll come here to the stand. After that, anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against that particular piece of business can come to the podium and do so and state your name and your address for the record. We are recording video and audio in this room. So at this time, we will open the public hearing for AN 23-01.
Okay. For this case, the applicant is the City of Greer and the property is located at the intersection of Chick Springs Road and South Subur Road. Parcel ID number for the record is T 01 001 01 001 05. The parcel is currently unzoned and within Greenville County. Their request is to annex and zone to R 20 Residential District and the proposed use of the property is as a fire station to service the City of Greer, which would require a special exception with the Board of Zoning Appeals if the annexation is approved. This is an aerial map of the parcel. It's currently unzoned and is adjacent to RS Residential Suburban zoning, which is shown in the color green, and PDR Plan Development Residential, shown in gray. Parcel is adjacent to the future land use designation of suburban commercial and that red line following South Subur Road represents a neighborhood corridor designation. This is a photo of the site as it exists today. That is all for this case.
All right. And since the city is the applicant, no one from the department is here?
Yeah, we are acting as the applicant tonight.
Okay. All right. So we will now ask if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against AN 23-01. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for AN 23-01 and we will open the public hearing for AN 23-02.
Okay. The subject property is at the intersection of North Highway 101 and North McCoheeny Road. Parcel ID for the record is 06312-1020100203. Property is currently unzoned and in Greenville County. Their request is to annex and zone to OD Office District and the proposed use of the property is as a daycare, which would require a special exception with the Board of Zoning Appeals if approved. Here's an aerial of the subject property. Property is adjacent to RS Residential Suburban, shown in green. The adjacent future land use designations are suburban neighborhood and conservation subdivision. The purple line following Highway 101 represents a transitional corridor designation. And here is an image of the existing site and we also included the provided survey. That concludes this case.
All right. Do we have the applicant present? Will he come up and talk to us a little bit?
I'm Trip Rhodes with PR 3 Construction and I'm representing Mandy on this project.
What's your address?
311 Bridgewater Drive, Greenville, South Carolina, 29615.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for me? No, she's just, it's an existing daycare facility that's probably about half mile up the road and she is going to build a new facility and just move her existing business down the street. So not a, not a big move.
All right. Anything else?
Not at all. Any questions for me?
Would anyone in the audience like to speak for or against AN 23-02? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for AN 23-02 and we will move on to RZ 23-01.
Okay. The address is 207 Old Woodruff Road. Parcel ID number for the record is 9-04-10-088.01. The existing zoning is RM 1 Multi-Family Residential and their request is to rezone to R 7.5 Single Family Residential. The purpose of the rezoning is to create two lots in order to allow an additional single family home on the second parcel. Here's an aerial image. Current zoning map shows the existing RM 1 in the light yellow and the parcel is adjacent to R 7.5, shown in gold. The future land use designation is traditional neighborhood. Here's an image of the existing site and the provided survey shows where the property would be subdivided into two if the rezoning was approved. And that concludes the public hearing presentation.
All right. Do we have the applicant present?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Jay Muñoz and I live on 30 Bridgewater Drive, Greenville, South Carolina. So let Claire explain, we're trying to get two lots on this multifamily, which is the current zoning for this parcel. The idea will be just to build a pretty small ranch-style home, one car garage facing Woodruff Road, I mean, Old Woodruff Road.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against RZ 23-01?
I don't necessarily want to speak for or against, but I have questions.
Come up, come up to the podium.
Hi, I just have some questions. My name is Amy Hickman and I live at 240 Old Woodruff Road, 29651. And I'm just wondering what, how small the structure will be and what the distance will be between that structure and the trailer behind it.
Okay. We'll get into that when we go to the next part of the meeting.
Okay. I've never been over to the first.
No, no, you're fine. You're perfectly fine. So you live on Old Woodruff?
Yes. I live right down the street. So, and I'm not, not necessarily, I just have questions.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against RZ 23-01? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for RZ 23-01 and that does conclude the public hearing. Now we will move on to new business. During the new business portion of the meeting, staff will make their official recommendation for each of the items that are before us tonight. If the commission has questions for staff, each other, or anyone in the audience, it will be our time to do that at that point. We will also try to cover questions that we've had during public hearing. But as far as back and forth with us and audience, we don't do that during this portion of the meeting. So, and it just keeps things moving, moving forward that way. So the board will basically make a recommendation to the city council either for or against what staff has recommended that we need to do. Okay? So we're not making a final decision here tonight at all. I'm assuming all three of these pieces of business, since we are at the end of March, will not come before council until, oh, I'm sorry, April, will not come before probably May. Is that correct?
Next Tuesday.
It will be next Tuesday.
Yes. A few of the cases, yes.
Okay. So next Tuesday night, council will meet right here in this room and they meet at 6:00 or 6:30?
6:30.
6:30. So you can come back then and they will be handling the cases that we are just making recommendations on tonight. So with that being said, we will open the new business portion of the meeting for AN 23-01.
Okay. Again, this is at Chick Springs Road and South Subur Road. Their request to annex and zone to R 20 Residential with the proposed future use as a fire station. Aerial image of the site, adjacent to RS Residential Suburban in green and PDR in gray. Future land use is suburban commercial and neighborhood corridor. The existing site today and the surrounding zonings are unzoned Greenville County, RS Residential Suburban, PDR Plan Development Residential. Surrounding land uses are both single and multifamily residential as well as the Subur Road soccer complex. Their request is compatible with surrounding land uses and future land use designations. Therefore, staff supports their request and recommends approval.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board?
So it has to go for, for a special exception. Is that just because of fire station in R 20 District? Is that?
Yeah, that's correct. There's no zone district that would outright allow it. It is part of a special exception process.
Is this an addition or is this replacing an existing?
I believe it's an addition.
It is. My understanding unofficially is that a road station will be closed from being a 24-hour, seven-day-long fire station. They'll move to this new location closer to Wade Hampton.
Gotcha.
They're still in preliminary stages of all workings. Because we don't even know which way the building is going to face yet. Is it going to face Subur or Chick Springs?
It's going to face Subur.
It will face Subur.
Yeah. This project has gone through PAC.
Yes. What about traffic study? Has that been done?
Traffic study is actually not required for the use, but the city anticipates a right turn lane onto Subur Road. So they're leaving some right of way for a future development.
It's bad right there. I was going to say, hey, they're back up past the railroad.
Are you saying a right turn lane on the way again?
No, right, off.
Off Chick Springs onto?
Uh, okay.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Say.
Motion in the second. Let's move.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Arciana?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. All right. Contact yourself for next steps. We'll now open the new business portion for AN 23-02.
Okay. This parcel is at the intersection of North Highway 101 and North McCoheeny Road. Their request is to annex and zone to OD Office District. Here's an aerial of the property. It's adjacent to RS Residential Suburban, adjacent to suburban neighborhood, conservation subdivision, and transitional corridor, future land use designations, site as it exists today, the survey provided by the applicant, and surrounding land uses are residential, Greer CPW property, the Lake Cunningham Fire Station, and a church. Their request is compatible with surrounding land uses and future land use designations. Therefore, staff supports their request and recommends approval.
Okay. Can you pull the map back up, please?
Yes.
So it looks like the lower end that the church uses that as an entrance. Is that going to go away or will that stay?
Right now, that's going to go away. So can you back that up one slide, please?
Oh, yeah.
Actually, the other way. That one. So right now, when she bought the property, she was going to use that existing drive for the church. The DOT, I believe, is going to make her put in a new entrance and have a four-way stop right there. So she's going to have to cut in a new entrance directly across from that street light right now, unfortunately. So.
She's going to have to put in a signal head and stuff to.
Yeah. That's not 100%, but it's pretty much the way DOT is pushing her to go. So.
So what happens to the, to the church's lower entrance there? Do they have an easement currently, correct, or?
They do. So I, I don't know. We're going to have to work that out with the church. The existing easement was with the understanding that we would both be able to use that shared drive. So we're going to have to go back to the church and have that conversation.
So DOT is going to make that driveway go away or will it?
They haven't officially ruled on that yet. So we're still begging to let us use that entrance, but it's not really getting very far.
So basically, when you cut your entrance across from North McCoheeny, they're going to put up a four-way stop there or maybe put?
They're going to put up a new light there.
They'll put up a light.
That'll signalize her in and out.
Her driveway.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Any further questions for the applicant? For staff?
Does it go back or anything?
Not yet.
And we're, we're accessing the city from the lake, I guess.
Okay.
How soon do you hope to start construction if everything falls in place?
We hope, we're, we're close to submitting for permit now. That change of entry is kind of altering our drawings right now. So we're probably three weeks from submitting for permit.
You just aren't growing your own location?
Yes. She's, she's actually been in three or four spaces in her current location. So, and she doesn't.
I believe they're currently in that neighborhood, right down the street.
They are.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Say.
Motion in the second. Mr. Lamb or quick trial call.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Arciana?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. All right. Contact staff for next steps. Good luck. We will now open the new business portion for RZ 23-01.
Hey, the parcel is located at 207 Old Woodruff Road and their request is to rezone to R 7.5 Single Family Residential. Aerial image, existing zoning, traditional neighborhood, future land use designation, and the existing site. Again, here's the survey with the proposed subdivision line. The surrounding land use is single family residential. Their request is compatible with surrounding land uses and future land use designations. Therefore, staff supports their request and recommends approval.
All right. What's the side setback?
It is 10% of the lot width with a minimum of five feet.
So it's roughly on seven feet, I guess. I guess, is that front porch? I'll go looking at the survey.
Let's see.
Is that front porch outside of the setbacks where that proposed line is or existing line?
That, that was existing.
20 feet.
That's it.
So the porch is about 10 feet.
So the house that's shown is actually existing, so it'll just be legally nonconforming. But the new house on the tract B would conform to all setbacks.
So you can stamp a survey, knowing that it's not conforming at the time. I understand legally not conforming.
Actually, so they, so sorry, they, or does it not? We may need to have a move a, a little bit.
I mean, I don't, I'm just.
It's an opportunity.
No, you're right. Well, Jay, do you know, is that, is that porch covered or is it a stoop?
It's not covered.
It's not covered? It's just a stoop?
Yeah, there's a picture of it.
Pull, pull your photo up.
It looks like it's got a roof on it.
It does have a roof.
It's got a roof on it.
And it's probably not even 10 feet, truthfully. It just, I just think it would need to be setback before.
We will take a look at that.
Yeah.
There's an opportunity to make it conform.
So then, let's see here. So then the front setback, which on Woodruff, is that going to be 35 feet? Is it just 20 foot on that main road?
20.
20 feet.
Okay. And then we'll.
I guess one of the questions was about the size of the house.
Yeah. Can you come back to the podium and let's, let the rest of the neighbors questions.
So the size of the house will be between 1,600 and 1,800 square feet. That's gross. So we're thinking about putting a two-car garage. So that's roughly 20 by 20. So 400 square feet just in the garage, roughly.
Attached or detached?
Attached.
Attached. All right. And you're going to front Old Woodruff in the driveway. It will also come off of Old Woodruff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that kind of get your question, ma'am?
It'll be roughly, I don't know, 50 by 35, just to pull apart. But again, ranch-style home, two-car garage.
And your rear setback on that, is that five feet?
15.
15. So, yeah. So there's, there would be, there'd be a minimum of 25 feet between the trailer and the house.
Keep in mind, this house will be owned by the same family that lives in the trailer right now. So it's not changing owners. It'll be the same people. They're just going to be renting the mobile home to their son.
Sure.
And they're moving.
But they could transfer. Yeah, for now.
There you go.
Sorry.
Yes.
At any time.
Correct.
All right. Do we have any further questions for the applicant? Any for staff?
The only thing I would say is if we can adjust that property line to make sure it needs a setback. So my only comment.
Yeah. Fix it now while we're going through this.
Yep.
I need some folks to go and agree.
Oh, goodness.
The rear setbacks is five feet, correct? Since we're going to 7.5.
That really doesn't have a rear. That's got like two sides and two fronts.
Yeah. So it'll be the, for tract A, the side would need to be 10 feet to that porch. So it'd just shift the line a little bit south. But you've got 9,000 square feet and only need a minimum of 7,500. So I don't think it'll be a concern with the overall.
But I think that line is at 10 feet from the front porch.
Is it? Okay.
This is measuring 20 here. So it's probably pretty close.
Yeah, but the porch is.
We'll verify.
Yeah, we just need to verify. That's all.
Yeah. Let's just fix it and I'll leave it for the next group that comes down the road down.
Yeah, absolutely. And this would get recorded prior to second reading. So we, we can definitely fix it before then, if you're okay with the zoning recommendation. We'll definitely fix that.
Okay. All right.
If needed.
Motion approved. We have a motion.
Second.
Motion in the second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Arciana?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. Contact staff for next steps. At this time, that will conclude the new business portion of the meeting. Other business planning and staff report.
Yes, we have business this time. Can I pull this up? Okay. So we are going to be implementing about quarterly. I think this year, it might only be about three times this year with how the meetings have fallen. But we just want to be able to summarize to you some of the cases that have gone through the PAC process recently, both cases that may be coming before you in the future or cases that do not require public hearings. And so you might not have had the opportunity otherwise to be aware of them. And so this kind of starts about October 2022 till about, probably closer to March than truly present, based on when you might have last had this presentation. So one of the first cases went to PAC in December and existing zoning is C 3 Highway Commercial with the intent for a Mavis tire facility. Includes these seven parcels with the stars on them, just to give you an idea. And it's at the intersection of Wedgewood Drive and West Wade Hampton. This was the preliminary site plan shown before us at PAC, but we have not seen any submittals since then.
Can I add one for you for a second?
Sure.
Can I let everybody know that nobody's required to stay beyond this.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Good point.
It can be fun.
Sorry.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
All right.
Any questions about this case before we move on?
Is that, I mean, I guess there's a line on there that looks like it's offset. It's got some dimensions on it, like 10342. Is that like a floodplain line or something? I mean, it seems like a big piece of property that is not being used all the way.
You're right.
That property drops off at the back. It's sloped back.
I think it's like grading.
And it drops way down. You know, Mr. Hicks has got his.
I'm sure that's not deep water there.
That backside has, has got a big basement down there and all that. He had it in less space than he built. But he's further back off the road too, I think, so.
Okay. Well, the next case at the intersection of Arlington Road and Seismore Street, it's actually right next to the DMV, is C 2 Commercial zoning, went through a rezoning, actually, and their site development plan was then submitted in January of this year for a coffee shop. This is site, again, right down south is the DMV and to the east is a church. And here was the site plan submitted. We are in, I think, the second or third revision stage, so things have changed a little bit. Any questions? Okay. Our next one is at 2701 East Phillips Road. I want industrial zoning and it's a industrial space. I think at this time, still just a shell building. We're not quite sure of the use, but their site development plan was submitted in January. Here's the location and here was this site plan submitted. And they have gone through some revisions, including needing to push out the parking for the landscape buffer and a few other things that have in the works.
And this is the property behind the First Baptist Church?
Yes, sir.
That was the one that got the sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. This one at 104 Twin Magnolia Drive is service district zoning and their request is for a flex space and a CrossFit gym. It has gone through PAC in January and no formal submittal yet. Here's the location and here was the submitted site plan for PAC.
And this is Twin Magnolia apples, the other street?
Let's see.
West Phillips. Yes, I know where this is.
I don't.
QT, it's behind the QT down there at 14.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're in the state.
Way, way more.
Down here near, near.
Almost not.
Yeah, that's true. I guess.
Okay. And if there's no other questions, that's some of the commercial developments. We have a snapshot of what's going on, on the residential side right now. Again, this is already a little bit out of date since it's about a month old and we've had, I think, five final plats come in just in the last two, three weeks. So things have really picked up. But when this was taken, again, I think in kind of in early March, we were looking at about 21 active subdivisions, a little over 1,200 platted lots. And I think Ashley's been trying to track over the last few years, almost, or just months, kind of seeing a similar 40% complete, about 20% permit issued and then around the right.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's stayed remarkably consistent for, as soon as one gets signed, a new one's ready. And as soon as we close one out, a new one comes in. It's actually very interesting how consistent it's been.
What was the Plantation main park, not the lakeside? How are things working out there after a year, year and a half ago, that they promised all this new development and all of these amenities were going to be in certain stages? Is, is anything happening out there?
As they did do a site development plan for kind of a master stormwater and grading for phases three, four, and five. And that did get approved and they're out there actively working on it now. They recently submitted SDP for Zone 3.
Zone 3A.
Yeah. So it does.
So, it does seem like they are picking back up. It did get a little slow. They still are platted for Lakeside, the cottages out there in Lakeside, but they did submit recently for three, which is closer on the main side. Yep.
Because one issue building permits, if they miss those deadlines?
Correct. I think they can do three before they have to do, I think they can do Zone 3, and then before the next one. I think they'll hit that threshold for needing the amenity center, and then the walking trails a little bit later, but the amenity center, I want to say, was 50. So, yes, we're keeping an eye on it.
Those people that bought 10 years ago, I mean, they're still waiting, you know?
Yeah, and engineering went out in October and did a site visit where they took a kind of gator and went through all the roads in the built-out subdivisions and in Lakeside, and they've developed a punch list for the developer to address in order to take over the roads, because most of the roads within the developments, they're supposed to be city streets, but they never have been turned over, so the developers.
They're not completed either.
Right, the developer is working on the punch list supposedly now, but.
Is it the same original developer that's?
No, so Mr. Bruce sold it to Enchanted Construction, and that's who brought through the updated statement of intent that y'all saw about a year ago, so Enchanted Construction.
Has that only been a year? It seems like longer than that to me.
Yeah, I believe so, but maybe, I might be wrong.
Was it 2021?
Yeah.
2021, so a year and a half, two years.
What's going on with the two that, I see they were approved in 2006?
Yeah, they're just still on our list because they weren't totally built out, but I do think since then they have cleared. It's really interesting, the last five years or so, we've closed out a lot of very old subdivisions that still had some lots. They had kind of five or so undesirable, and they've come in and closed them out, so. Yeah, for context, there were seven plats signed in 2022, and we already have seven that have been applied for since just January, so not sure how many more we'll get this Here's a look at some of the subdivisions currently under review with their status. Again, these might have changed a little bit, but just to give you an idea of how many. And then here's a look at the multifamily, just with some active apartments.
These are ones that are in construction.
Yes. Yeah, and Lively Victor, actually, I believe, is now close to 100 or built out, so we'll be moving that off the list.
My daughter actually moved into Lively's a month and a half ago, and Debbie Fire Marshal ran into his daughter, they got an apartment together, this is their first time being out on their own, and it is extremely nice, and I was very impressed when we were moving green, elevators, you know, wide corridors, and the apartments are very nice, and they're very, I mean, the developer did what he promised he would do, and the ground's very nice. They're really happy doing it, so.
Were they inexpensive?
No.
They. 1400, 1500 a month?
I don't think they're quite paying that, I think they're paying maybe 12 or 13?
That sounds about right.
For two bedrooms. That's actually really good.
Too bad, but they wanted to be down here on Main Street, and they were waiting, but, you know, I don't think that's going to be ready probably till, what, late this year or early next year.
I think filled out, our COs are anticipated late summer.
Really? They got a lot of work to do.
They do.
But, and I think they, somebody said they're paying maybe a couple hundred dollars more for the same size apartment, just because it's a little closer down, but, yeah, you know, they had some kind of move-in special where they gave them a month free or something like that, so, you know, the rent kind of works out for them. But, yeah, it's very nice, so. All right, anything else?
No, that's it. We'll probably have a similar presentation in a couple more months, but if you have any feedback or any specific projects you want to know about, just let us know.
Well, this is great. All right, can we get any other business before the commission, anybody go? Ingraham's complaints, partners? Anything? All right. Motion to close. Got a motion to close, we got a second?
Second.
We're adjourned.